We are running a little bit late on the beginning of our meeting. For the Florisville City Council regular meeting for July the 12th. It is now 6:11. I do call this meeting to order. If you would please rise for our invocation followed by our pledge of allegiance. Father in heaven, we give you this meeting. May your will be done and we ask that you guide and direct. It is in your most holy name that we pray. Amen. Thank you. We do have a quorum in attendance tonight. We do have Councilman David Johns, Councilwoman Gloria Cantu, myself, Mayor Sissy Gonzalez-Dipple, Councilman Juan Ortiz, Councilman Nick Neeson, and Councilman Gerard Jimenez. At this time, I open the floor to any citizens' comments. We do give the opportunity for any citizens five minutes. And if you have anything that you would like to address to the council, you are invited to come up to the podium. Okay? (laughing).
I'm Donna Dickerson, resident of Florisville, president of Chamber of Commerce. Just like to inform you, we're having a job fair. This is in conjunction with Texas Workforce Solutions and the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Florisville. So it is on July 26th. If you'd like to pop in and see how things are going, we have a lot of employers that will be there. Should be a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes. It's here at the Event Center, 26th of this month. I'll actually put some extra flyers in the back if you all would like to have a copy. Okay. Thank you. No other citizens' comments. Moving on to item 1A, Old Business Consideration Action to Approve the Minute Meetings for the Regular Council Meeting on June the 28th of 2018. Council, you have in your packet, I hope you have had a chance to look it over, but I'll give you a few moments and then I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes or to make any changes.
(inaudible) approve minutes for the regular council meeting on the 28th.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
(inaudible).
Seconded by, I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cantu, seconded by Councilman Jimenez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to our presentation and discussion. Item 2A, we have our Wilson County Historical Society to talk about historical marker plaza, or the historical marker. We have Mr. Harry Grove to do the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Council.
(inaudible).
May I approach with handouts?
Okay, yeah, not yet on the lights. That'll be for later on. The next one. Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
May I approach with handouts?
Sure. Thank you, sir.
I've been asked by the Wilson County Historical Society to make this presentation and help them figure some of this stuff out. The area we know as Lodi is rich in long-time history, as you can tell from our many years of being here. We have a list that we can hand out later. The Wilson County Historical Society, in partnership with the city of Florisville, would like to establish a historical marker plaza to feature that history. The marker plaza would be on FM 536, which is trial street, immediately across the street from the old train depot, and at the head of the hike and bike trail. Currently, there is one historical marker for the city of Lodi already on this location. It's in that picture I handed out, that was handed out to you. The next two markers to be installed would be the Lodi Ferry and the De La Zerta Cemetery. The project would be completed in phases, which would be laid out in the final project plan. Funding for the project would be the responsibility of the Historical Society. The preliminary plan is to place historical markers in the plaza which cannot be placed at the actual site because of inaccessible or insecure locations or private property owners will not willing to have a marker on their property. The plaza would accommodate approximately 12 markers. That's how many sites are in that area that we know of right now that can be identified. A map would be installed in a large signage fashion to indicate the actual locations of the historical sites represented by the markers. This would be an ideal location for tourists to see the plaza, stop, and appreciate our history. Parking would be provided there at the site on FM 536. Walking paths and benches will be strategically placed in the plaza to make it attractive to visitors. And that's our idea.
It's a wonderful idea. And as we are working on budget, we are talking, oh, I guess the first question would be, how would funding come about for this?
I haven't been told yet by the Historical Society what, how much they're willing to put into something like this. We haven't inspected it far enough. The city manager is still looking for a survey of the land. We need to find out about infrastructure, how much we can do. If you'll notice on the drawing, I've kind of illustrated that that sign billboard thing would be on a built-up hill of some kind, and put stone in front of it that complements the stone that we have here on the Event Center. Right now, it's just in the idea form, Mayor.
Okay. Mayor and City Council, we've met several times and even actually on-site. And if you look at the information in your packet, one of the things they talked about was a placement of any existing underground utilities, and I believe a spectrum just put a box there. I am looking for the survey. My city secretary is out, and I think she has a copy of it. But we wanted to have a survey so we can definitely designate this area. So this area is ours because of the hike and bike area, and so that is our property. We've spoken to Phillips, I see I talked to Mr. Duane Duke today. He was working on something for Christmas lights. But when we were talking to him today, they don't plan on doing any type of adding any electricity there. Anything that they add now because of that highway, it's like a county road, would have to be underground, and underground is very expensive. And so we're looking at maybe the alternative lighting source of maybe some solar lights that can be there that we can hopefully do. And then, of course, size of a parking area and placement of some stuff for the vehicles is something that we can do, but we need to go over there and see how much space we can have. And then because it's coming off a street, we want to actually mark it so that we can have Tex dot come by and talk about something similar to what Mr. Neeson was saying in our earlier meeting, to say that we can pull over, because we want people to pull over safely, and have a small parking area, I wouldn't call it a parking lot, like a parking area, to let people park and get out and read the signs. And so I-
They can pull in safely off the road, not necessarily on the shoulder.
What is the request that the Historical Society is asking the City Council? I think it's a wonderful project and a wonderful thing that we can do, but what would the Historical Society need from the city of Florisville? And Henrietta, you may know more about that.
What they're asking is for us to partner, because it is our property, something similar to like with the Park Foundation. And as they're coming with an idea, and they've met several, I think I've been able to attend two of your meetings, is they're coming to a plan for them to go forward and purchase the markers and to do this, they need to be able to do that. Now, I'm going to say the name wrong, so I apologize upfront. There's a marker for the De La Zorda-
De La Zorda.
De La Zorda.
Say it again.
De La Zerda. Yes, cemetery that they have replaced that marker because it was damaged and vandalized in its current location. And that's one of the markers our family is really asking to be placed here. And so as we want to say that the council is, I know it's not on agenda, it is on agenda for a CNA, to say, yes, this is something you're, and we want staff to work on and partner with them to make it official so we can come out of the dreaming phase and into some serious planning phases.
This, Councilman Jimenez.
I think, compared to what you're looking at, I think we could do that. As a city, you don't do that in kind, you know, on park. So that way, there would be less maintenance if we do it on pavement for that.
Well, yeah.
Somebody do a little concrete.
We can come back and do some numbers and some things. I just need-
That's what I'm around it.
I just need permission from the council to make this a project to move forward, because we've had a couple of meetings and we want to make it an official project so we can start talking about a budget, how much would it cost and what we can do.
Okay.
May I talk out of school a little bit?
Yes, sir. You're on.
We've all, the Society's also had another idea, but they haven't pursued it at all. But if you all know where the archive building is down on Courthouse Square, right-
The old probation part.
The old probation building on the corner?
Mm-hmm.
Well, there's a vacant area right next to it, just west of that building before the driveway to the jail. And they're thinking about putting a signboard on there that would advertise all the spots that are historical in the city and would guide them to this one.
It's a great idea.
Sounds like a good idea.
What, is it, is it visible enough there? I mean-
Is that where the restrooms are during the peanut festival? Nope?
No, it's across the street.
Across the street. Where's-
Across the street from Pat Brown's kind of-
In the corner.
On the corner.
On the corner, okay.
And stuff around the kind of, there's that, something that you would have to really look to see.
There's a grassy area big enough for-
Yes, and because we're the county seat, I believe one of your members said that it would represent the markers for the whole county. Because we're in the county seat and it's so close to the county building, it would be historical marker for the entire county, not just the city of Florisville.
Okay. Yes.
I don't think we could put anything in the county. That whole square right there, you would have to go in front of the county or something.
Oh, yeah. We'll have to ask permission.
We can't put no, we can't even put political signs on there. The whole block.
Right.
So it would be something that they would have to have the commissioner's court.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman.
I wanted to know, because I've had phone calls from people that live in Florisville, who is responsible for cleaning the graveyards there at the De La Zerda Cemetery?
Personally, I don't know.
Well, actually, that is come, it's a family cemetery, it's a private cemetery, and the city has not been cleaning it. However, I think in the, back in the day, the county did clean it, but the county no longer can do that. And so we've been working with the, and I believe you attended that meeting, Mayor, we've been working with the adult probationary people, and we have staff that come on Saturday. And so if somebody has to do community service, that's where we're taking them to go do, is to clean the cemeteries. So we're providing staff on a Saturday, so that staff member works on Saturday and doesn't come in on Monday, but he is there to supervise, to take them to, and that's what we've been doing, to use adult probationary to clean that. And it's kind of up and down because not everybody has to do community service every weekend, but that's what we've been doing, and that's what we partner to do.
Thank you. Okay.
Ask a question.
Oh, yes, one more question.
Can you please, Harry, can you, can you please tell the audience here where this cemetery is at exactly and why? People can't go in it?
Sir?
Can you please tell the audience why and where this cemetery is at and why can't they go in there?
De La Zerda Cemetery.
Correct.
As far as I remember, Jesse took me there early on, years ago, and it's on the river. Isn't it down by the river?
It's around the corner from the-
I know where it's at.
He said down by the river, but it's really around the corner from the sewer plant.
Okay. I'm asking him a question. And can you please answer it?
I don't, I don't know how to answer your question. I don't know that much about it.
It's a, it's a, it's a private cemetery. That goes back to-
Oh, some of the stones are really old.
I have relatives there. That's my neighborhood there. That's Lodi.
And the reason, yeah, the reason it's so hard to get to is because it's a one-lane path. I'm sure you remember. And so we actually met with the Historical Society at one point, and we are working, trying to work with the county so the county can help us clean the sides so that we can get a better path to get in. It's just that budgets are tight, and so we're working on volunteers, and the county has been-
Yes, it is a dirt road, and when it rains, you really can't get around through there. But we have been able to, when we're using our probationary officers, probationary citizens to cut it back a lot to navigate back there. So it is a lot better. I don't know how recently you've been back there, but it's a lot better.
Problem with the shredder, just go through there and then-
But the road is, but the road is not our road, and technically right now, it's in the county. It's not a city road.
Right.
And so, which is one of the reasons why we couldn't use city employees to go back there and clean it, because it's not in our city. It's actually in the county, and then it's a private cemetery. So the gray area that I found was, we have probationary people who have to do community service, they give them to the city, they say we can use them wherever we want. And so I let a city employee watch them because somebody has a sign to say that they worked. It's worked out so far.
Maybe it's a miracle, bring it to the commissioner's court and see what the problem is. If it's something narrow, I mean, all we have to do is go straight with the front end lower.
Well, we have talked to Commissioner Gomez and Commissioner File, but it's actually in Gomez's precinct. He's doing the best that he can. But again, because it's a private road, that kind of, that-
Find out which-
Yeah. Yeah, so it's in the works, it's in the making, but it's just very difficult at this-
And as for the sign, I think all the signs that they've been putting there were sort of these, they've been showing and we're doing something.
Well, I wouldn't say vandalized, but yes, they did, it was shot up pretty bad.
And that's, Councilwoman Cantu, I know you-
And that's on Peach Street, right? All the way from Peach, you cross the tracks and it's back there.
Yes, yes.
It's on the corner of Goldie and Peach.
Any other questions or comments for?
(inaudible).
Oh, okay. Yes, and we were supplied with the picture of damage to the current sign. I think a lot of the council have seen it. If you'll pass it down, if you'll pass it down, we'll share it with the council.
Is, just on the bridge from Riverbend going down the bridge, it used to be a historical sign on that little walk bridge, the railroad track, they had a little plaque there. So that sort of got disappeared. How do we find out about getting something like that replaced? Do you guys do that?
There was one there.
There was one there saying, this was dedicated to the railroad, or it had disappeared.
So I'll, I'll see what I can find out.
Okay. Well, all I can tell you is when I leave Riverbend from this shop, and I walk down to Lodi, there's a little bridge there, there's a plaque there when I first moved there.
It's the Black Bridge, because there's a red one and a black one. The black one is closest to-
Yes.
The golf course, and there was a historical marker to talk about the bridge and the coverway. And I believe Colonel Pettis was very instrumental in getting those there, but it is now gone.
Yes, it's a great place to walk. It's (inaudible).
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Grove?
Thank you for taking the time to do this.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Harry. And Mayor, and Council, there is an action item, just to say that you agree with the concept so we can move forward. Okay. All right, moving on to our second presentation, preliminary plat for the new subdivision in Riverbend called The Links. We have the villages at Riverbend. I know our major director is here as well.
Mayor and City Council, you have indulged me for a minute, as he's turning on, because he was all prepped before. This is a presentation for a Riverbend subdivision. It has gone before the planning commission, and I'll give many that you have, while he's warming up, an opportunity. We're not asking for any action, he just wants to bring you up to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is Phase 1 of a new subdivision in Riverbend called The Links. It is a preliminary plat review, though there is no signatures required. Intrepid, our city engineer reviewed the plans to make sure that it complies with all of our subdivision and the development agreement that the city has with Riverbend. It went before planning and zoning June 27th for a special meeting, and it was approved, or they're recommending council to approve it. After Mr. Coons gives his presentation, there is a CNA layer further down on the agenda to approve the preliminary plat, and it is good for two years while he is doing infrastructure. Before he provides the council with a final plat.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And there, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, just a few slides for showing you the plan, new section in Riverbend. I assume everybody knows Riverbend by now. The next section is called The Links, and I can give you a summary of what has been done so far, what is in place so far. You may recall that the city signed a developer agreement with Avalon Park four years ago. The developer agreement basically is a building code that puts all the obligations and rights of both sides, city and the developer, into a written form. There is an 18-home public golf course and a pro shop. There is a restaurant, loose patio and grill, a banquet room, and some tennis courts. The developer agreement basically allows to build 900 residential units. Those can be apartments, duplexes, townhomes, single-family homes. It has two existing, what we call villages, so basically subdivisions. One is Traditions. It has 90 residential units. There are three lots left now as of today, meaning that are not committed, that are vacant. And there are in Legends Village, 66 residential units. There are seven lots left, so the inventory is dwindling pretty fast. Presently, there are three home builders active in Riverbend, AVEX Homes, which is also the company that I represent, Hensmark Homes from San Antonio, and Casey Custom Homes, which is Florisville. Custom Home Builders active in, you know, the south, west, southeast, south part of San Antonio. Here's the master plan, basically in a nutshell, showing in the various colors, the villages that are eventually going to be built. You can see the little, on the left, lower side, the villages with the names on it, and the golf course. This is the first section. When you come from 181 business, you turn into the golf course community on the right side. You have the 90 lots of Traditions. This is an older lot list showing the available lots. That's now down to three. The type of homes that has been built there is, you know, the more lower-priced houses. It has old sightings. Most of the houses are one-story, between 1,400 and 1,950 square feet. Then the second section is called Legends, with 66 home sites. On the middle right side, you see the driving range with the pond, the restaurant, the banquet hall, the pro shop, the car shed, the parking lot, and then in the middle, the 66 lots on two roads where we drive, and grand view. Type of houses that are being built is more the higher-priced segment, three-sides masonry. They usually are in a size of between 2,000 and 2,500 square feet, mostly also one-story. So again, The Links, the section we're talking about right now, is when you go to the map on the left side, the big splash with the flag, on the middle-left side, that is The Links. And here you see the darker brown colored section, that this is the Links section, 107 total lots. It's on the west side of Fairway Number 9. On the east side of Fairway Number 9 is The Legends, so the existing higher-priced subdivision. The Links section will be, you know, the one most remote from the highway, will be built in two phases. You can see the part that's called available, 54 lots in the first phase. And unavailable just means right now it's unavailable. Once it's built, we'll build that in a second phase. The reason to build it in two phases is cost and risk. We don't want to produce too much inventory and then, you know, not be able to sell the inventory fast enough. Here's another, more technical rendering. This is the engineer's plan. Same Phase 1 is the one that we're building first, west of Fairway Number 9. Phase 2 is going to be the second phase, probably in about 18 to 24 months. Here, another section showing the circle on the right side, upper side, which is the in circle when you come in, before you turn down into Legends. You just pass Fairway between Fairway Number 8 and Fairway Number 9, and go down the road to the new section. The project data, 107 lots total to be built. Lots are to be built in two phases, 54 and 53 lots in two phases. We hope that the lots are ready for construction, meaning ready for houses being built on next spring. Usually, it takes about four to six months to build a subdivision of that size. We are, you know, basically, we have to wait until it has been formally approved so we can move forward with the bids, the financing, the layout, the surveys, and then start building, hopefully sometime later this fall. It has fantastic views. The house prices will start in the 250s based on our calculation of the cost to build these 54 lots in first phase. That's about it in a nutshell. Any questions, let me know.
How do these lots normally run?
Say it again.
How much of the lots, what do they normally run starting at what?
The lot prices? Between 15 and 60,000.
Any other questions for Richard?
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. What did you say?
Richard Coontz, K-U-N-Z. Richard.
It is a beautiful area, and I know-
Thank you.
We have a councilman who lives in your area, so how is the internet coming in, working out for you guys in that?
Yeah, the spectrum right now is digging the trenches and cutting the motor lines and cutting the power lines. So, you know, every day we have a house out of power, out of water. So they are more or less complete. So they did a lot of digging in the last two months. To my big surprise, they came in and basically refurbished both sections, Traditions and Legends sections. So now, the trenches are in, the cables are in, the helmets are in. So now, the trenches are in, the cables are in, the carpets are in, and it takes them probably about another three to four months to put the wire in and start, you know, basically off.
So when these houses are getting sold, you can add, they'll have the added addition of high-speed internet?
Yeah, right now, the most of, most of the homeowners have internet from either satellite or-